Before we start, I would just like to order the committee to tonight when we start with government operations and then move to some other things. And finance. Ready? All right. Order of government operations. First, the order business is to get the paper. So if I can have a motion.
Please come back to me, too.
And the second.
Please want to come with you?
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. The second thing is something that we discussed several months ago. And the time for action was December. And so I did reach out to Assemblyman Stepp's office. I also got some copies of what we've already received in regard to the impact of those groups of four. So just take the four that are collated there. The impact on the budget should we move ahead. But in talking to Assemblyman Stepp's office, what we need to do is have our legal department draft legislation and then send it off to them. I spoke with a woman named Allison Lane. She'll in turn take it to legal, the real property committee, and the local law committee. It generally gets voted on at the end of session, which is met due. Can be voted on earlier if needed, but that's something that, you know, we have a lot of work to do before that happens. And we need to supply them with the scenarios we prefer. So, you know, tax rebate versus lower percentage versus homeowners pay a certain percentage less. To recap what we've talked about in the past, we talked about home rule legislation to put a payment plan in place for homeowners that owe two years or less taxes in arrears, using the star exemption to, you know, decide who gets, you know, to identify the homeowners. And then the home rule would also hold it at a lower interest rate. In the package that I sent around to, there's scenarios of what that would look like on the budget. Is it past smaller than I'm told it? So I'm just opening up for discussion because we need to start to define as a council, if we want to go forward, what this might look like. I also understand Mr. Waterfield is here to speak with us. Is there something you would like to, you know, address or talk to us about before we have discussion or a disquieted discussion?
Any questions?
Okay. Great. So if I'm correct, and please tell me if I'm not, the difference in interest income for every 3% reduction for all of the outstanding homeowner liens we have right now would be $16,112.22 to the budget yet?
Yes. This is on all open liens between 2010 and 2013.
But it's about where we...
It's an estimate.
Yeah. Okay. So for every 3%, then we would reduce the interest rate for homeowners. It would be a $16,000 reduction of income in the budget. And just also to recap, right now it stands at 21% interest rate all the way around. As a council, I believe we already decided that, you know, we had no interest in non-owner occupied properties that were in arrears, but would consider reduction for, you know, homeowner occupied homes. So comments, questions? Yes?
You mentioned two years in arrears. Are they going to be two years in arrears by making a good faith effort to pay?
That's what's up for discussion. I'm just recapping what we touched on as we discussed this in the past. Doesn't mean that that's what we need to do now. Just kind of reminding everybody of where the discussion left off before we entered into the home rule discussion. Comments, questions? Does every...
So if we did this with someone and then they defaulted, they made a payment late, does it then go back to the original? Is that the consideration that would go back to the original interest amount?
I think that's something we would determine. Yeah. But that makes sense. It would be in good faith. I mean, if you want to put this on for the next cycle, if you want to kind of think about it and bring your ideas back to the table.
There's a lot to go...
Bye. Yep.
You're looking at the home rule request. The request, my understanding what the council was looking for is the ability to have a different rate for residential owner occupied property, those properties where the star exemption was in place. So you would send that in as a generic request for home rule legislation. If the state legislature granted that authority, then the council would have to come back and then set the rate. So you wouldn't ask the state legislature to charge 9% or charge 15%. The whole rule request would be more generic in getting, again, giving you that ability to really set a two-tiered rate structure.
That wasn't the conversation I had with Assemblyman Stepp's staff person who kind of specializes in this. I can go back to her for clarification, but what she asked that we do is send a specific scenario that we'd like to see. So do we want to rebate it to the homeowner? Do we want it to reduce it by a certain percentage, but not just we want a lesser? And I can go back to her for clarification, but that's what she instructed me that they would need, something very specific like homeowners pay 5% less interest, you know, that kind of thing. So I can ask for clarification again. But in the meantime, if everybody can put their thoughts together and come back to the table with some ideas, and if we have to go generic, we have to go generic. But just to also recap the part of the conversation that we said, if we could not get home rule legislation that would allow us to do that, we would consider putting very specific scenarios together where we could decide on a case-by-case basis for home owner occupied properties. That was something we were trying to avoid because then, you know, but it would be like if this and this, then this, not we'll do this for you, we'll do that for you, we'll overlook this for you, you know, that kind of thing. So can we put that on the agenda for two weeks then, Chuck?
Can we also take a look at including veterans, veterans exemptions? How many folks that receive veterans exemption that are with tax rebates as well? Isn't there veterans exemption as well?
Still has to be owner occupied.
Right. But can we include the veterans in this piece as well? That's what I'm asking.
Are they on already?
Well, this is only for people that are in arrears with their taxes.
Well, the veteran could be in their arrears as well.
Well, they would be included.
They would be homeowners, though.
They might not be.
Yes, they would be included once they're in arrears for two years.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. So we'll put this back on for two weeks. Anything more to come before government operations? You have the business? So I've got a motion to adjourn. Thank you. Second, all those in favor? Aye.
All right. I'm going to call the Order to City Development and Planning, and we're going to take item number four out of order, which is a request for a zoning change for, I think, an exciting presentation of project on State and Brandywine. Mr. Streich, then I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. All right. I'm out of order. Okay. This is a request for the property at the corner of State and Brandywine, the number of parcels that has been vacant for a number of years that go all the way down Brandywine to the funeral home. For as long as I've been working here, I think most of these properties have been vacant. We had a proposal a few years back for a drugstore there, and because of some of the zoning requirements, it did not make it through. We have a proposal from Atlantic Development now to take that whole site. They have an option on, options purchase the property. And they're requesting a change from the C2 mixed-use zoning to a planned mixed-use development. This allows them to develop the site better, put more buildings on it, make better use of it. And I think it's a great way to get this site moving along finally. So I'm going to hand up a presentation to Andy Brick, who is representing Atlantic Development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
With me this evening is D.J. McKinnon, the principal of Atlantic Development. Very excited to be here. It's a very exciting project. For those of you I haven't met yet, my name's Andy Brick. I'm a zoning and planning attorney based out of Albany, but previously from 2006 to 2008, I served as your deputy corporation counsel. And that must be Mayor Strzok calling me to congratulate me coming back. I served as corporation counsel here from 2006 to 2008. So it's really great to be back, such an exciting conference in a city with such an exciting project. I would point out, though, that when I was here, this room always used to be freezing. So I'm pleased to say that you corrected it. It might have gone a little bit the other way.
Too hot.
That way not really. So the proposal is for a request for a planned mixed-use development on the corner of State and Brandywine, the northeast corner. I believe, again, it's the excitement of this from my perspective as a zoning and planning attorney, I believe, Steve, this is the first time that someone has applied for a PMD zoning under your existing zoning code.
Yes.
So we're going to be breaking new ground in that regard as well, as well as breaking ground and hopefully redeveloping a site that could really use some development. But you know me, you don't want to hear it from me. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to D.J. McKinnon from Atlantic Development.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, President, and Mr. Mayor, member of the council. I'd also like to thank Jackie, Greg, Steve, who we've met with before and had some preliminary discussions. My name is D.J. McKinnon. I'm the president of Atlantic Development. We have primarily developed in the New England area. I'm excited to look at this as hopefully our first development in New York. We have looked at a few other projects in the area, but it's the first time we've been able to secure options on a large enough parcel to be able to move forward. I have also brought with me tonight just some copies of our brochure, which show you. I'll just leave these on the table if you want. Some of our other developments that we have been involved with over the last 25 years. We've done about 4 million square feet of retail and commercial mixed-use space, about 3,000 units of housing. So we've been busy and we want to continue to remain busy, particularly with this site. As Andy mentioned, we have been able to secure options on all the land from the Autozone parcel down to the intersection and then going along Brandywine, including there's an existing funeral home on the site today. There was a proposal in the past to develop a portion of this property, and there were a couple of other parcels that were not part of it, but we have been able to get these options on the entire, on the entire piece. We put together a package, which I think you all have seen, which includes this aerial. It also includes some of the representative photos of the site. And then we get into a bit of a discussion about the zoning, where we try to provide a bit of a comparison of the zoning that exists on the property today with some of the surrounding communities, which have, I guess what I'd call more typical zoning for properties of this size, which would allow us to go forward with the retail development on it. And the key characteristics of the zoning that we'd like to focus on are today there's a maximum building size of 12,000 square feet regardless of the size of the parcel. Again, this is a little bit large for the typical C2 zone, the 12,000 square feet just doesn't work. In addition to that, there are some elements of the zoning with respect to the location of parking, as well as the ratio of parking to the square footage of building area. So those are the items that we look to address and look to work with the planning and zoning office on those if we're fortunate enough to move ahead with this zoning process. So with that, the other thing that we are trying to focus on is to do something right at this corner, and in particular, what we'd like to do is follow the streetscape improvements that have been able, that have been so successful downtown and try to bring those to this area as part of an intersection rebuild. We've talked to Ray and have had great success with Metroplex Downtown. We'd really like to try to address this entire intersection, focusing on our corner, but also seeing if we can maybe work on these other corners to try to change the whole entrance and presentation people come into the area. What attracted us to the site is it's a signalized intersection with a lot of traffic and highly visible. We like that for retail development. But at the same time, we also want to change the impression of it as it's for, and really make it an inviting place, but as well as make it a much better pedestrian experience for people that are in this area. We're not sure of the final design of this. We'd like to work with the city on that, but as people come in off the highway and they see this key intersection, you know, we think we should say something that welcomes people disconnected, maybe some type of historic artifact, we're not sure at this point, but provide the space and the location for it so that we can accomplish an appropriate proposal for them. So this is kind of the, this is the quick review. I know you've got a lot on your agenda tonight. You know, I'm happy to answer any questions. We see this as the beginning of the process and really just look forward to working with those disconnected as we move forward.
Great. I think this is exciting. Questions? Ms. Porterfield.
You don't have to be extremely specific, but do you have an idea? I know you gave us the folder on the type of things you've done before. Do you have an idea of the type of retail? Because this is actually like right within the city. So do you have an idea?
Yeah, we see this as the type of retail that would serve this immediate area. When I say immediate area, you know, within half a mile to a mile. We've got strong demographics, we've got a heavy population base. So, you know, what we show in this plan is really just kind of a representation is basically a bank in this corner. We show this is a retail space of above, I think it's about 14,500 square feet. So retail is kind of in this 10,000 to 15,000 square foot range, and I think we put another 7,000 feet here. There is a possibility, you know, we see a shortage of smaller grocery in particular in this area. If we could attract maybe a grocery store to come, we might take these buildings and combine them and put, you know, maybe a single neighborhood grocery store this end of the site, facing forward. So at this point, it's a little premature. We have talked to a number of tenants that we've worked with in the past, who's interested in the site, but quite frankly, it's hard for us to advance those discussions until we know we have zoning that works for those types of uses. But really, the retail service pretty much is the median area.
Any other questions?
I know you addressed it in the report here. We're talking about the no left-hand turn off of State Street going northbound. We're going to make changes on that to that effect as well because it's very difficult. There's no left turns at all coming from all the way downtown all the way until you hit just about, well, past McCallum Street, I guess. You can't even make a left. So that's one that the needs to really address. And also during school hours, Brandywine is a very, very busy street coming from the north direction heading south. The schools letting out, that traffic is very, very busy. So again, when you redesign that area, but very, very excited about the possibilities of, not the possibilities, of the reality of you coming here in the city is connected here. I think we've got such good news going on and to see a, you know, fine investor making this your first New York State project, I think is very commendable to the city. And thanks to Ray and everybody who's been working on the project. But I don't want to speak on the council, but I'm certainly very excited for it, especially for the Hamilton Hills neighborhood as well. We've been talking about that for many, many years. It's like, well, it's still, but it comes down to even the grocery store here, too. I mean, that's the same little area. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
The other thing, the other shot, because a lot of times when you're looking at plans like that, they're great when you're applying over the area, but the other thing that we try to do is give a sense of, you know, this is what you see today at the intersection, which you're all familiar with.
Minus the long side.
Taking that building layout, you know, and applying it, you know, onto that intersection. This gets a better sense of kind of the foreign actor, you know, from the streetscape standpoint, which is where people would normally look to see this type of development.
That's wonderful.
I think it's great.
Yep. Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, too. Thank you.
So this is a referral to Planning Commission for the zoning change.
Yep. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Okay. Mr. Ferrari, second. Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Great. Yeah. It always reminds me when I first got on the council and I attended some economic development conferences and meetings, you know, and they always talked about if you can start with the downtown and gradually it'll spread out. And this is a great example of it starting to spread out. Exciting. All right. Back to the agenda. So go back now to the sale of four properties to the land bank. This is on Carey Street.
Okay. The city has four properties in the third block of Carey Street, which is actually the last block of Carey Street that they didn't. There are three of them that are contiguous on the left side, 1671, 1685, and 1693, which has a vacant lot and two boarded up apartment buildings that have really been eyesore's for quite some time, as well as a boarded up property across the street at 1702. I've been speaking with Habitat for Humanity, and they are very interested in the site. And they're also working on the block before that right now where they're demolishing properties and building, they're demolishing three properties and building two. For this site, I'm requesting that they be transferred to the land bank. The land bank's already approved me making the request to you to purchase these four properties for a dollar a piece, and then the land bank would demolish the properties. The three on one side would then be sold to Habitat, and they would then work on their new model of housing, which is what Alden is doing, which is more kind of townhouses, attached townhouses. And so they're looking at that. So we want to help them try and develop that model that we might be able to use on Eastern Avenue and Rankin moving forward. The property across the street, 1702, is, we would tear down, they would use that for staging initially. If we can get properties on the contiguous to that, we would look at those in the future as well, but probably would use that for a side lot. Once they're done, offer that up to the properties on either side of it. So the request is really just to take, to sell these four properties to land bank for a dollar a piece.
Questions? Ms. Porterfield? Okay. You're ready.
Just one. Steve, is this part of the CDVG proposal for the Habitat for Humanity to make the repairs or to build these homes? Or are they looking to fund their projects?
Well, we're still, we're still working on a case of that. It's land bank money to demolish it. There might be land bank available for affordable housing as well for CDVG. So we're still working through the details, but they're ready.
Their CDVG money was for the houses farther down the street.
Okay. Because I thought it was.
This is kind of explained with what they're already doing.
Can you explain you can do the home funds for this?
Oh, nice idea. Very good. Very good.
And I have a letter from Habitat, making a formal request as well, where they're interested in the project.
Any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve this. Ms. Porterfield, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, you all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Call for a public hearing on changes to the city code regarding electronic messaging boards.
Okay. It's going to be a little bit, my next, after this, I'm going to speak about billboards. This is about electronic message boards, which can be billboards and can also be electronic marquees like Proctor's has. If you remember, Ms. Parazzo requested that we look at our change of rate, which was once per minute, which was extremely slow compared to what everybody else has. DOT is right now once every eight seconds. And so they're allowing things to change at a faster rate than we are. We sent the planning commission, and they agree that the change should be in line with what the DOT has. I don't know if any of you stood there looking at the Proctor's mark here, even at 10 seconds. They have a variance, even at 10 seconds. I'm waiting for the next message.
For the next message to come up, right. Exactly.
So this is a call for public hearing to make the changes as recommended by the planning commission. Public hearing will be on January 26th, and the vote will be on February 8th.
Questions? Mr. Carter?
So again, if this does go through, Steve, does that affect the other, let's say, stores or whatever who have these messaging boards? Will they be able to drop to the eight second, or do they have to reply?
No, it's as of right.
Because I'm thinking like my Blue Ribbon Don, who I remember years, years ago, we gave them great grief because they weren't complying with the, whatever the 30-second rule was or whatever. So they would be able to...
Anybody who has one will be able to comply with the 30-second.
Go down to the eight second. Okay. Very good.
Other questions? No, I'll entertain a motion then to call for the public hearing. Mr. Ferrari, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Good.
Very good.
Billboards.
The billboards, I'm looking for clarification. Prior to me working here, the city council had a moratorium for a while, and then they tried to, basically limited the number of billboards that could be created in the city. And for every new billboard you need to want to put up, you have to take down two. So over time, I haven't really had any guidance on this, both nothing was ever anticipated about the move to digital billboards. And now billboard companies are coming at us very fast and furious to change the signs to make them digital. And this allows them to change, have eight messages a minute or six messages a minute instead of one. And my guidance is no billboard may be erected unless the building inspector grants a relocation permit upon the showing that a new construction is a relocation of two billboards. So I don't know if that includes putting a new billboard up on an existing monopole, and I'm having a little trouble enforcing this. And I don't want to just say, go ahead, change every single sign out here to an electronic message board. So I'm either looking for some guidance for you or directly really just to move this back to planning commission for them to review if that should be changed, or if your feelings are that it should be. A relocation is also the construction of an electronic message board on a already existing monopole. And if you want the easy way out, you can refer to planning.
This seems like you would know it, right?
Yeah. Ms. Porterfield, I mean, to me, relocation is pretty clear. It doesn't mean that if someone wants to update what they currently have, which is a standing billboard, put a paper on and that's it, they want to update that to electronic, that's not relocation. It's improving what's in the existing location. So to me, if relocation is what this is referring to, and someone wants to improve upon what they currently have, that that would not apply based on that.
And if that's unanimous, I'm comfortable with that. I just don't want to be making a determination without, so they have a little guidance here.
Other thoughts?
What planning taken, right? What planning?
I think...
I think that's exactly true. Planning should take this. Working a bit, best interest.
Okay. So that's just a referral to planning commission also.
But it'll come back to us.
It'll come back to you.
So I'll entertain a motion then to refer this to the planning commission. Okay, Mr. Ferrari? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And then we will move to item number five, which is authorizing, authorize a request from the planning commission for a zoning code amendment.
And this is two pieces. This is also a referral to planning commission for some proposed changes to waterfront zoning, as well as a call for a public hearing to be held on January 26th.
Yep. 26th.
So basically, what the waterfront zoning was created in 2008 to provide appropriate waterfront developments that provides access to the river, something I'm sure we probably is lacking anywhere in Connecticut other than in Riverside Park. This was an untested ordinance that we did in 2008, or untested zone change. And as we started looking at what we put in the legislation versus what can actually be developed there, we started to look at some items that really needed to be addressed, such as parking, setbacks, height, signage, and trail location. So the city staff has been working with Gillesse and Representative Russ Street-Gaming to see what changes might be made, and we have come up with a language that I believe you have in your package. And I'm going to once again ask Andrew Brick, who's representing Russ Street-Gaming, to speak about this.
Hi, guys. I really don't have too much more to add. This is just a procedural step to refer these proposed technical amendments that have been discussed with staff, as well as Gillesse, who's, you know, responsible for the other portion of the Molok Harbor project. It's just, it's a technical referral to the planning commission. We're prepared to address any questions or concerns that the planning commission may have in advance of them making a recommendation back to you in advance of people who aren't public here before the city council. We think these technical amendments, we agree with the staff comments that these amendments make for the best, most effective development and utilization of the Molok Harbor project and the surrounding area, and harmonize the elements of the Molok Harbor project with the gaming facilities and ancillary facilities, as well as the waterfront, the public access that has been cleared to us for city staff is a paramount concern to city staff of bringing that bike trail through the site. So again, we think this is just a procedural step, but we'd ask that you consider the start of this process this evening.
Questions? Okay. Ms. Porterfield?
This is just a call for a public hearing.
No, this is actually a referral to the planning commission.
Referring to...
And calling for a public hearing.
Aye.
Okay.
Both.
Okay.
So there's two motions.
Okay. So I'll take, and I'm taking a motion then to refer this to the planning commission. Mr. Ferrari, okay, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
So again, we think this is just a procedural step, but we'd ask that you consider the start of this process this evening.
Questions? Okay. Ms. Porterfield?
This is just a call for a public hearing.
No, this is actually a referral to the planning commission.
Referring to it.
And calling for a public hearing, sorry.
Both.
Okay. So...
So there's two motions.
Okay, so I'll take, and entertain a motion then to refer this to the planning commission. Mr. Ferrari, okay, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And then a motion to call for the public hearing, 26th. Ms. Porterfield, Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great, thank you. Okay, now we are moving into some property sales, and this has kind of shifted in the city development and planning because it's viewed as it is planning, you know, planning for the future. So what we will do is, one, actually, I'm going to ask, we'll recess this meeting and go into executive session to deal with the property sales. But before we do that, let's move to item number 10, which is recognizing the Scotty County Teacher of the Year. Mr. Regie has proposed, which is good.
You know, Kristen, that's a lot, what's his name, Teacher of the Year, people that has practice.
Yes.
She's all set for the campaign.
Great. Good. So I'll entertain a motion to approve that. Okay, Mr. Ferrari, second by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
And then I'll entertain a motion to recess the city development and planning committee. Ms. Porterfield, second by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll call to order the finance committee, Rose Garden Restoration Committee. Thank you. Before you, you have a request relative to the Rose Garden Restoration Committee. They are requesting, as they did last year, to be received, to receive some reimbursement, some city reimbursement of expenses that they incurred on behalf of maintaining the Rose Garden, equal to the amount of revenue that the city received for events. This year, and when I say this year, I'm referring to 2014, the city received $1,700 in revenue from events at the Rose Garden, and the committee has provided the city with a receipt showing expenses that are totaling $5,081 for various work that they had done at the Rose Garden. So before you, it's a request to reimburse them.
Questions, comments?
Would like to move this?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any other business to come before the finance committee?
Jurno?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good, we're adjourned.
All right, we'll call the order of the Committee on the Initiative of Efficiency, and we're going to discuss the local law best value of purchasing. And if I may turn that over to Mr. Valdico, you're going to be talking about it? Who was talking about it? You're looking at me like...
That's a fucking message?
If not, who wants to take it?
No, I didn't talk to you tonight, but I'm prepared to, because we had a public hearing, we're ready if the council prepares to withhold documents legislation on Monday.
Listen, concerns from the, from Tamika.
From the affirmative action advisory board?
From the affirmative action advisory committee, correct.
I've read the letter from the affirmative action advisory board, they made two main points. The first one was whether or not this was going to be about services or just the purchase of goods.
Right.
Our whole time, the intention had been just for the purchase of good. We've been working off the language that came out of the county, and they did have some language in there that could be a little, make a little bit of discrepancy. So I'm prepared to take that out, that will satisfy their first issue with it. The second issue they had was on the effect that this would have on MWBE companies and their ability to get these contracts. And I certainly understand where their hesitancy is coming from with that, but the way that I believe it's best to address that would be through the affirmative action policy that they're going to make recommendations, recommendations to the council on. Any contracts or any purchasing that we do has to follow the city's internal procurement policy, and this would be affected by that as well. So instead of dealing with it piecemeal, with just the best value of purchasing, you know, they're going to come and make a recommendation to you on a fundamental effect for the city as a whole, and I think that's the best way to move forward with that.
And able to persons with disabilities as well? Were you talking about businesses with that, or individuals?
Yeah, whatever, whatever you make a recommendation on.
Ms. Porterfield?
I didn't understand your answer, what do you, to his question?
Whatever the committee, I guess, is going to do.
What, the affirmative action advisory board? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
All right, so where is that language actually removed from here, in terms of the, where it talks about? What are the concerns of throw the affirmative action advisory board? Because in specific language that was used, which came from the county, was it really talked about services? And the intent of this that came through the state was really, really about contracts for major purchases, like apparatus, material, and any kind of service related to that. So the legislation that we receive that's used in the county includes services, something that MWBEs could do continuously. And so larger companies may be in a better position to actually get those contracts. So that's why their concern was having that in there. Tamika wanted me to, just to let everyone know that the board is not against this particular legislation, but just wants to make sure that it does not have a negative impact on MWBEs.
I believe the capability of this proposal is for really equipment, where you would purchase something, let's say a car or a copy machine, and the purchase price may be a little bit lower than the competitors', but the competitors have lower variable operating costs, so that you have a bid that's a little bit lower on a car, but it gets less gas mileage. And so really, over the long term, paying a little bit more for the car today would save you money over the seven-year, 10-year life expectancy. Or same thing buying a photocopy, where the copy machine might be a little bit less, but buying the toner, service contract, whatever, would be more expensive. And so I don't see the city using it in a manner that would be adversely geared toward some of the concerns that have been raised. And then, you know, if the legislation is worded just to make it for an equipment, it serves the needs of the city, and what I believe what the original intent was of the legislation.
And I agree, if the legislation is worded to specifically for equipment, but the legislation we presented with does not include other services that specifically said janitorial, which is janitorial, I don't remember the other term in the legislation that actually is in here, security. And those were things that the board felt that those are things that MWBE could actually bet on.
Bet on.
And that was really specific in there. So that is where the concern was raised.
And if you use this word, even though I don't see how those things would apply, if you have a proposal for security or janitorial services, you're going to be locked into those costs. It's some of the variables, you know, we're getting security or janitorial, where the variable costs in outer years, again, I don't even see how the cost would vary, it's that the specs would have to be written in a most defective manner, so we wouldn't be getting their best value.
So, so why is that?
I don't know.
Why is that in the language of the question?
I don't know why it was put in there. I believe it's in the best interest of the city, I believe.
And that is basically the request, that it be taken out.
And that's what we would be giving to you to vote on the next market. You'd have a chance for you to have a vote in advance of the council meeting, if not prepared right now.
Okay, so as long as, think of particularly that concern correctly, there's a member of the affirmative action advisory board, is there anything else that the board was concerned with?
No. You didn't realize that people were concerned with equipment, like the general warranty, services, vendors, janitorial, and security?
So if that's not, that way you can get the delay.
Definitely.
And didn't it have something to do with bids exceeding, they had to exceed $20,000? Wasn't there a minimum amount that had to be in there?
It's...
But we don't see that very missing piece that I have.
That's in the city's purchasing policy.
The city's purchasing policy.
But even though we look to apply it for, I'll say, a photocopy, in terms of valuation, so it might not come to the threshold of $20,000, but we might spend $2,000, $3,000, $5,000 for a copier, and looking at what that variable cost would be would enter into the consideration of the final decision.
Right, right. Okay. So can you highlight, or can you somehow make it known to us what changes you're making into this contract, so they stand out for us, so it's not buried in all these little eight font letters that I have here? And I have to look for it.
Yeah, I can.
Do you hear Ms. Porterfield, right? You'll make it stand out for her, or just show us what you deleted, so at least it stands out for ourselves, and we are sure that it's out, and we're happy with whatever it is. Can we get a copy of that, hold it by the other week, so we can share it with the committee? Just to preview and see if they have any other concerns?
It'll definitely be with council by Friday, so you can do it over the weekend.
Okay.
If there's any issues with it, we'll see as possible.
Ms. Porterfield, is that okay with you?
Absolutely.
All right. Very good. Okay.
Just one question. Are we going, I'm going through here, but I don't know, I'm missing it too because of the font.
Right.
Would there be any written justification if we award any contract awards based on criteria that is not objective, quantifiable? Because I'm going through the state procurement, I think they called for local government, have a written justification?
Well, they say it's always a good idea if you're going to do anything besides the lowest bidder, to have the right justification. It's not legally required that you have to have it there, but we definitely would have...
Is this something that we should consider? Maybe insert it somewhere here, this or that, I guess.
Ask the council.
Did we use this? Is this what, did we pick it back off the county, what Scotty County has already voted on? Is that where we got this legislation from? Gary or Carl?
Yes, that's where we got this. That's our draft, in front of the other panelists.
They've already approved this. Is that something you're looking for, or?
I think it's something that we should, I mean, you know, because nobody's going to come back down the road to call us, you know, we award this contract. Here we have something in writing that why we award this contract, so this forum.
Are you in the comments?
No, I agree. Yeah, I think that we need to be able to say why, and that it's not a suggestion.
I'm aware in the community, and when we're asked, the question asked, we're scrambling for answers.
Right. And that way it gives everyone, you know, a guidance on how to do it.
Yes.
Right. It's not, you know, maybe you like that vendor, and maybe somebody else doesn't, so.
All right, we'll see if we can get that in there, Joe.
I think it's, you know, the mayor gave two prime examples, say, we chose the more expensive car because it gets better gas mileage. You know, that's just an easy justification to say, this is why we, and I think it's just sound, you know, that...
It's overall.
It doesn't hurt to put it in writing and attach it to the proposal.
I think that was in their Dave Fox original presentation, and that was the example he showed, I think it was a fire truck or diesel truck or something, it was a pickup truck, I think it was. One used diesel, the other one used regular gas, and he talked about the maintenance and all that, so that is the example he used in there. But if you can put that in there, that makes our folks comfortable with that, if we can do that. Just more to your agenda to go.
No, that's what I'm saying.
All right, are we okay with that, Mr. Scott?
Yep.
All right, so can we make a motion, at least move this?
With those proposed changes?
Yeah, with the proposed changes, okay?
Yes.
All right. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right, and opposed? Any else to come before committee? Motion adjourned, Mr. Reddy, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, aye? Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll reconvene city development and planning and ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss the sale of certain properties. Okay. Mr. Ferrari, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks. [applause] Mr. Ferrari, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thanks. [applause] [music] 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 [music]